Good morning, welcome to our Tarrant County Commissioners Court Budget Workshop on this Thursday, August 14th. I now call the meeting to order.
Tim O'Hare, County Judge.
Present.
Rodrick Miles Jr., Commissioner Precinct 1. Alisa Simmons, Commissioner Precinct 2.
Here.
Matt Kraus, Commissioner Precinct 3.
Present.
Manny Ramirez, Commissioner Precinct 4.
Here.
All right, today's invocation will be led by Tarrant County Sheriff's Office Chaplain Frank Lidkey. Please rise for the invocation and our pledges.
Shall we pray? Father, we're thankful for this time that we have, we again, we're so thankful that we live in a, in a country that we can come to you and ask for your wisdom and guidance. We pray, Lord, that you would bless the judges, well as the commissioners, give wisdom, as the Bible says, if we ask for wisdom, you'll give it to us. So we pray that you'd give them wisdom as they go about their responsibilities and, and which affects so many people. We pray for them. We pray, Lord, for our other county employees, as well as those in the Sheriff's Department. Father, we pray that you'd keep the sheriff, his staff, as well as the officers that are, that are working as we speak. Please keep them safe. So we thank you for this time, we ask your blessing on it, and I ask these things in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen, thank you Chaplain. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance to our flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And now the Texas flag. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one and individual. Thank you, you may be seated. All right, we will now begin our workshop, work session. Who is leading us off, you or Helen? All right.
All right, good morning, court members. All right, before I get started on my overview, I'd just like to describe what the last couple of days especially been like in the budget office. Obviously, they office right down the hall from, from the Administrator's Office, and certainly our teams have been working very closely on trying to get this budget to us, a place where we were ready to present it to the Commissioners Court. To say the least, we probably took an additional five years off of a carpet in that, in that office with all the people walking back and forth, and I kid you not, literally flying pieces of paper in the offices at some point. So just, I say that to say that this budget team led by Helen has done an absolutely incredible job putting this budget together for this court to consider, and I'm just very proud of the work that they've done. That being said, let's get going. So typically, when we do these budget hearings, I kick them off to kind of talk about what's been going on in Tarrant County from a more global perspective. How's the economy doing, what does the average taxable value of a home look like, and things like that, and this year won't be any different. So just to kind of set the stage for what you're about to hear with regards to the budget, we just certainly will always start by talking about the estimated net taxable value. It's up again this year in Tarrant County. That's been consistent for really over the last 10 years, we've continued to see home values and values in general rise in Tarrant County. The new value for this year is just under 300 million, or billion, excuse me, 297 billion, and that's about a 4.7% increase, or 13.4 billion increase over the previous year.
Can you go back to that slide for me?
Yes, sir.
So I remember a lot of talk about what the Tarrant Appraisal District did, and there were three or four things they did, whenever that was, a year and a half ago. I just, it's, I find it interesting that the act- What was the value in '24?
'24, the value was 283,734,667,000.
So it went up about 14 billion.
Yes, sir, 13.4.
Do you know, can you tell me how much of that was new construction?
I can, that's on a slide coming up here in a second.
Yeah, go ahead.
I would assume that all of it is, because weren't, weren't values frozen?
No, it was kind of, it was kind of not reported very accurately, so they, it wasn't frozen on businesses.
Okay.
And then on residences, half of it, because there was a, there's a, about half the residences had the taxable value and the market value not the same. So those folks could still go up to 10%, if it didn't match. I was one of the lucky ones who got, went to go, got to go up 10%.
So I actually talked to the Chief Appraiser about that this morning, in case this question come up, that's a very accurate representation, and the only thing I'll add to that is about 70% of the homes had not reached their cap on the homestead exemption, that's what could have still continued to go up, even though they didn't request that.
Has, and, and I'm sorry not to hijack your presentation, but does, does our budget reflect anticipated passage of the constitutional amendment election on the increased homestead exemption? Or no?
You know what, I'm going to defer to the Budget Office on that, no? Okay, no.
So prior to tax rate and, and budget vote?
Well, I think what happens is it actually goes into fact 1.1 of '26.
So it will not have an effect on this set of revenue, assuming it passes, it goes with it, got it, okay, got it.
Good question, Judge, thank you. Okay, to continue?
Yeah, okay.
Mineral leases, so this is tax on minerals that are still in the ground that have yet to be extracted. This year, minerals have trended down slightly from where we were last year, about 18.1%, so the, the current value of minerals is about 340 billion. Tax rate in Tarrant County, so in continuing with our, you know, over 10-year tradition, the tax rate in Tarrant County has either remained the same or been taken down over the last 10 years. There was a period in there, as you can see, between about 2018 and 2020, where it remained the same at the 2, 3, 4, and then it's slowly gone down every, every other year. So what you'll see on the far right side is the 2025 proposed rate of 1862. I'm going to let the Budget Office talk more about the, the drill down of those numbers, but this budget that we're presenting today supports a tax rate of, of 1862. Comparison of current tax rates, so a lot of counties, cities, other local governments are doing the same thing we're doing right now, having their budget hearings and presentations to their governing bodies to, you know, solicit their input and approval over what that final budget looks like. So we don't have the current rates for this tax year, but what we typically do is look at the previous year's approved rates that the governing bodies did, we typically look at kind of the big six counties here, and as you can see, as of tax year 2024, even at the 1875 rate, which is our current rate, we are still the lowest of any of the six major urban counties. New construction, this answers your question here, Judge. We, we have seen an uptick in construction, which is a good thing, last year it was actually down. The, I went one slide too soon here, excuse me. Construction taxable value is about 4.9 billion currently, that's about a 7% increase over the, over the previous year's construction value.
So that's nine billion from increases to residences, businesses?
Yes, sir.
So it's almost twice of the new construction.
It's also a sign of a healthy economy, obviously, we're growing, or as, as we like to say for county administrators and city managers, when we see cranes swinging, that's a good thing, we love seeing that. Average single-family home value, so this is for the most part trended up over time, this year it's very slightly up over the previous year. Let's see, the current average home value is 276,948 dollars, that's up slightly over last year's of 276,515, 57 dollars, which is a .1% increase, and I think I just lost my mic.
Yeah, that happens at that mic a lot.
I know people don't want to hear me talk, but dang Garrett, there it is, thank you.
The, go back to that one for me?
Yes, sir.
The, we had this discussion, it seems like two years ago, where we get the average home value is from TAD's market value or taxable?
So they give you all three values, this one is the taxable value. So they give you the average appraised value, the average, and the average taxable value, and in this slide, we're showing the average taxable value.
Okay, I just, if this goes out to the public, or if we do this again, make sure it says that, because that sounds like our average value for a house in Tarrant County is 276, which it's significantly higher.
Okay, so it says taxable value right there, but next year we'll make it more prominent?
Oh, okay.
If we need to, we're happy to do it, sir.
I'm sorry, I missed, out of seven words, I missed two of them, so.
No, no problem, sir. And then my last slide here, which to me, this is kind of where the rubber really meets the road. If you look at the tax year on the far left, then you look at our tax rate, the adopted rates by the, by the county, and then you take that and multiply it times, or excuse me, yeah, multiply it times the average taxable value, that far right column gives you by tax year, the average annual tax bill. So this year, we're projecting, based on this budget, a decrease again of about, I think it's $2.92 off of the average annual tax bill from 51860 down to 51568, which is about just over a half a percent decrease, .57%. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to the auditor.
Can y'all go back to that slide, let me just look at one thing real quick.
Good morning.
Got it, okay, thank you.
Good morning. As always, I have the responsibility of presenting what we project the revenue estimates to be for all the various categories. It's just a combination of meeting with departments, getting what they anticipate their business is going to look like in the coming year, as well as what statutes have changed throughout the year, and economic indicators throughout the economy. The first one that you see is licenses, which is beer, wine, and marriage licenses, typically this fluctuates every two years, so that's why you see it going from 1.4 to about 1.3. Fees of office is fees that are generated by all the various elected officials for them carrying out the duties of their office. Cash fines are penalties imposed by the courts. Intergovernmental revenue are revenues for specific programs such as indigent defense. Investment income is exactly what that is, it's the interest that we have earned on our cash balances. And all other revenue is going to be things like our building and other types of revenue that we're generating from other processes.
Food truck fees, inspection fees is where?
I don't know off the top of my head.
Fees of office?
Those would be in fees of office.
Or licenses.
Well, I think actually right now they're, Josh, can you help me?
Just one comment, Joe Donnan, the, those fees that you're talking about are over in the public health?
TO4 in public.
Yes, they're not in the general fund.
Got it.
Okay, I'm sorry, back to our slide, which, we're at transfers, and that represents the transfers we make to other funds, in and out of general fund to Road and Bridge primarily this year, it's about 10.2, I believe. Next is taxes, which are net of TIFs. TIFs are tax increment financing zones, these are contracts that the counties entered into with all the various municipalities for public development. This year, we saw a large swing, it went up to 11.3, primarily that's due to a couple of agreements, well, actually three agreements with the City of Fort Worth that we extended, and that's about 1.2 out of the 1.4 million increase that we saw this year. And then we will next talk about, whoops, sorry, went the wrong way, sorry. Major change elements, essentially what this slide represents is the change or increase or decrease that we see between FY '25 and FY '26. For taxes, this number is all operating funds, things that drive taxes are not just the increases in values that we've talked about, but we also have to take into consideration potential losses related to judgments, agreed judgments, and also ceilings that are in place for over 65 and disabled vets. So we have to take some of those elements into consideration when we're making those projections.
On the investment income line?
Yes, sir.
Did you, what rate did you adjust down to, to come up with that number?
We, I looked this morning, we did an average, it's about 3.6 is the average throughout the year, we're projecting like 3, but this morning I read that's either anywhere from 2 to 7 rate cuts, it depends on who you're looking at, so.
What, what, when we did the budget last year, what was the rate we based it on?
I want to say it was 4.1 is where we started roughly, and then we had an immediate rate cut.
The last time you looked, whenever it was, tax prime, whatever that one's called, tax pool?
We're currently, yeah, we're currently earning, depending on, commercial papers about 4.41 right now, and tax pools about 4.35, that's what we're earning right now.
And like, do you remember around this year last time where tax pool was?
Josh, do you have? I think it was close to 5 before they took a rate cut, and I think they took an immediate rate cut, if I remember the details, but Josh will look for us.
Okay.
The biggest driver in this, when we had larger cash balances related to ARPA funds, we started off FY '25 with about 121 million in ARPA funds. We're projecting now, at the beginning of FY '26, we'll have about 34 million, so that's also another driver in why we see a decline in the investment income. And then we haven't talked about, but constable fees, staff's going to propose an increase in constable fees, the Budget Office has done some analysis, and we're about 35% lower than some of the other counties. And we couldn't determine when the last time we actually requested an increase for that service.
Is there any constable fee besides service?
They have writs of execution, eviction, there's a lot of different variants.
And that's still serving, that's still serving papers, though?
Right.
There's no fee besides serving papers for them?
That, that's correct.
Okay.
All right, building rental utilities and janitorial, that's all related to resource connection, we have some contracts that are terminating at the end of this month or next month, and so the revenue associated with the rent and utilities will be reduced. I keep pushing the wrong one, sorry guys. All right, cash carry forward. Cash carry forward is essentially just the cash we have available for use in the budget, it's not our cash balances, it's what's not encumbered. So as the slide will show you, you can see that our cash balances have declined over the last year, which also correlates to the reduction in investment income.
Why the significant increase in debt service, is it due to road projects from transportation bonds?
Actually, sir, that is our reserve, our reserve policy requires we maintain at least 1 million, last year we budgeted 1.5, this year it's right about 1.8.
I didn't understand that, what it's-
Reserve?
Yeah, well, I know it reserves, I mean, based on what?
Our, our current reserve policy requires that we maintain a mil, at least a million in the reserves.
And why are we going from 1366 to 1844?
After discussions internally and with the Budget Office, we felt like that was the best approach at this time.
For what reason?
Payment, a $43 million payment, 1.8 is, in essence insignificant, but still necessary if there was a need to be able to make a payment that we couldn't make. And that's really what it's for, is to, in case we get into a situation where we possibly can't meet our obligations.
So you don't, you don't tie it to a cap or to a minimum of a million, you tie it to a percentage of the outstanding debt, correct?
In this particular case, the court approved some time ago, they wanted it to, for us to keep a million dollars in the debt service. As we have been able to recognize more, we have increased the reserves from 1, 1.5 to 1.8. Any other questions or concerns? With that, I will turn it over to Helen, and I would like to thank Helen for all the hard work and her team, they have worked tirelessly this year.
Kim, can you go back two slides, I have one more question?
Which? Sorry. This one?
Right there. So taxes net of TIFs, it was a learning experience this budget cycle, I don't know why I didn't figure it out last cycle, but whenever you calculate that number, you have to calculate it on as if the, the TIF is fully built out and the entire discount is coming out, although some of these TIFs could be approved, and we're not realizing that loss, correct? You have to calculate it on full build-out value.
It's not full build-out value, it's the, it's the incremental change from the base year, whatever the base year is, and the increment change between the base year and the certified roll, and then we also take into consideration the collection rate for those areas as well.
Yeah, got it, thanks.
Morning. I'd like to take just a moment to ask the staff that is working the Auditor's Office and my office to stand, they did the late night work, they put all the numbers in, so Josh and Linda, that's you two.
Can I make one comment, Helen?
I forgot to say one thing when I was doing my thankful, yes, of course, the Auditor's Office, I'm sorry, Kim, I meant to mention y'all, but the other thing I was going to mention is Friday night at 12:30 a.m., last Friday, is when I got my last text from Helen saying, "We just finished, the budget's balanced, we're all headed home." So they were up here till 12:30 a.m. Saturday morning, trying to get this ready for y'all, so I, I wanted to mention that, they, they work very hard at what they do, so I need to say that, thank you.
Definitely.
Okay, so on the expenditures, the notable appropriations are listed on this first page, and let me find my notes. What we're showing here is what is significantly different or increased the budget. The very first one is the, or changed, the very first one is the capital, cash that's left over capital, last year it was, of course, I'm not finding it. It was, it was 53 million, and now it's 22 million, and that's a reduction of 30 million, so for cash, for capital requests, that's all capital requests, buildings, equipment, vehicles, we have 22,835,104 dollars available. You will see that as an inter-fund transfer in your budget, all of these are normally under non-departmental, so it always looks like there's a large budget under non-departmental, but it is transfers to fund other expenditures that are happening in another fund, budget. The Road and Bridge transfer is 10,971,945 dollars. Personnel, so personnel is built and supported by this budget for a 3% merit increase and a step increase for law enforcement. The law enforcement has a structure increase, and this budget does not represent a structure increase. increase for non-departmental. The new positions that we have added are 58, 23 of them in the general fund, and 35 in Road and Bridge. Of the 23 in general fund, the offsetting either of a reduction in force, or additional revenue for a new program, is 2.7 million. And the, the actual cost for the new positions in general fund is 2.5 million, for approximately 231,000 dollar savings. The reserves. Our reserves are set aside at a 16.75 is what we are hoping to achieve. At 83 million dollars, we're at 15.2, which gives us about 55 days of reserve. The debt service, again, we just talked about that, is 1.8, which is included in, when we take into consideration what our percentage is, we include debt service in the reserves and debt service.
Helen, question for you?
Yes, sir.
How long have you been the Budget Director?
Seven years, eight years?
What's the largest dip you've ever seen in reserves, where it was something needed to be taken out? Have you ever seen?
We've never taken anything out.
Can you tell me, can anybody here tell me how far back we would have to go to say when it was, when it was taken out?
I've been in the Budget Office for 20 years, I don't recall it ever being taken out. And we started off at 10%. 10% is a requirement for our AAA bond rating, but the recommendation is a 16.7%, which is your 60 days. We're, like I said, we're at 55. So, we've incrementally gone up in the last eight years, to try to reach that 16.7%.
Is that supported by GASB or GFOA?
GASB, it's GASB's recommendation, that you have 60 days, two months, of reserves in case of. But no, sir, I don't recall it was ever using it. Which is why we always have cash left over. It's funded by cash, that cash, last year's is this year's, this year's is next year's. Of the important changes, we are adding, we are of the cash, and you'll see in one of the slides to come up, how we utilize the cash that's left over. One of the things we're going to be doing this year, which is not a normal, and hopefully it won't be a normal, is we're taking of the cash, 3 million to put over our employee group insurance benefit fund. It is, we are realizing losses over there, and we're trying to not have to do large increases for employees or the county, and so, we are hoping that this will shore up some of the need over in the group insurance fund.
So, Commissioner Ramirez and I serve on the PEBC Board, and Roxy, and a couple of other HR folks, the Dallas HR head, and I think in the Denton one, it's kind of a three-headed triumvirate there. And what they have done since we basically changed the way that's governed, they have, I would say, put together plans with better options for our employees at significant cost savings, literally across the board, and they continue to do it every day. So, you should be commended for that work. They are doing outstanding work there.
Another significant, something different this year, is there was a buy-down of debt service obligation of 3.5 million dollars. So, that went directly off the principal, so that gave more funding available in the operating budget. And also, we're complying, the legislative session changed this year, the salary for judicial. That affects our county judges, and while it's different for every one of them, depending for them across the board, depending on their tenure on the bench, we did not notate it here, because we would have to look at every single one of them. But it is in the budget for their increase, under compensation allocation, which is over non-departmental, for all salary increases across the county. In addition to that, the statutory requirements for the changes for the county judges, along with the probate judges. All right. These are the new positions. I'm not going to list them out, I'm not going to call them out, but we have listed them here by what we believe is their reason for being added to the budget. The first one's Tax Office, is a new program. There are several things that they're doing there, they're becoming, one of the, is they're becoming a willing county, which is, means they will be taking in additional work. So, that's a new program, there's three positions there. The HR department is doing a total reorganization of her department. She is adding 17 positions, but of those 17 positions, 22 of them will be eliminated, but the current employees in the positions can apply for the new positions, the new positions that are being created. It's not a layoff, it is just a reorganization. The rest of them are for workload. So, of that, we had, let me go back one. So, there are 20 positions in general fund, that are completely offset by either the elimination of positions, or new revenue, as the willing county participation in the tax office is going to be creating additional revenue. So, that is offset, and the remaining are in Road and Bridge, and that's 38, for a total of 58 new positions. Recommended uses of cash. So, this is the fund, the cash that's in general fund. We use the cash to fund the reserves. The undesignated, the transfer to general fund, to the group insurance, which I just talked about, in capital. So, there was 113,805,104 dollars available, and that is how we're going to use cash. Any questions? Employee compensation, we talked about that just a minute ago in the first slide. So, that is a 3% merit for all employees, including those that are maxed, without a structure change. There will be some that will, there will be additional people that will be maxed, and they will receive a lump sum. Law enforcement structure went up 7% for the peace officers, and 4% for confinement. And then, the step increase is similar to their merit increase, as their structure will change all on October 1. And then, as they qualify through their appraisals in the different departments, they would be eligible for a step increase. The Road and Bridge, we broke it out by fund, that's 401,000 for merit there and lump sum. There is no law enforcement in Road and Bridge. So, we adopted, we are presenting a budget that is based on .1862 tax rate, our current tax rate is 1875. A penny of the tax rate at 1862 is 28,683,187 dollars. The no new revenue rate was .1866, so we are below the no new revenue rate, and the voter approval rate was .2423. I'd like to say before I start to say anything on this slide, that all of that tax rate that was calculated, was on six different iterations from the Tarrant Appraisal District over the course of about five days, before we could come up with what our no new revenue rate was.
Did you ever get a final explanation as to why there were so many different iterations?
What I do know is that the software was not calculating specific numbers here and there correctly, and they were going back and rerunning them. And one of them, it looks, we actually ended up using the school district, so the certified tax rule that we received, the county receives, is what's called a 100K. And the final one that they had us use was 140K, which is for the schools, because they felt like it was the more correct certified tax rule.
And I'll make a note on that, too, Commissioner. We certainly reached out directly to the Chief Appraiser on this issue, and we asked him to give us an email in writing with the attached final rule, as he, as the Chief Appraiser, is statutorily telling us, "This is the rule for you to use."
So, this, we're presenting a balanced budget. Our capital requested was 61 million.
Sorry, let me go back to that.
Yes, sir.
So, you said, the reason why you kept getting different numbers, was because the software wasn't picking up, by picking up, meaning it wasn't including properties, is I'm assuming what that means?
We don't know the answer to that. We've asked, now, we do know that at one point, between the 100K and the 140K, which is just a matter of the form, that it had different counts of completed properties. And so, when we asked that question, the one we received had more completions, the one they told us to use had less completions, just by two properties, but still less completions. And they said that that was the correct one, because when they regenerated it for the school district, it threw those two properties back into incompletes.
Okay.
All right. So, we are required to present a balanced budget, so our appropriations that we have are balanced to the revenues that the Auditor's Office has made available. We had a request of 61 million dollars in capital, and we have 22,805,134 to disperse. This budget does not reflect the capital in it. We have removed it because we are putting together a capital improvement plan to submit to the court. In doing so, our capital budget will be more in line with our capital plan, and that will be done in our special purpose budget, that we'll be submitting in September.
Tad prior to Rick being sworn in, I think had entered into a contract with a group, I think they did, to, because there were so many people that they believed were out there claiming homestead exemptions that didn't have homestead exemptions. Do you know what the status is of that? Have they completed that? Have they made any changes? And if, if the answer is no, can you get us an update on that?
I don't have an update, but I will get you one, Judge.
So, there are several important dates that we have to meet. We have to adopt on September 16th. The Commissioners' Court will be presented information, and you will adopt a tax rate. We will have a public hearing, and an approve, and submit to you a budget for adoption. And then, there will be a public hearing and approved compensation for certain elected officials. That is required for us to publish the elected official salaries, and so, that will be presented Today, when you vote, there are three things that can happen. You can vote yes to the budget, you can vote no to it, and you can table it to be considered And that concludes the presentation. Any questions?
All right. Court members, any questions for Helen, or Chandler, or anyone else?
Yeah. Is, is Roxy here?
Roxy's not, she had a family emergency that she's dealing with.
Or her assistant?
What's that?
Or her assistant?
Yes, Rochelle is here to answer questions, if there are questions.
Okay. With regard to the human services, I'm going to say human services a lot, I mean, human resources, because I've been talking about human services. So, Human Resources Department, can you go into detail on, so, on its face, it looks Elimination of 22 positions, but we're adding 16 new positions. So, are the 20, do the 22 positions have people in them?
The 22 positions that are being added will be new positions.
That you're, it says elimination of 22 positions.
So, we currently have 24 field positions.
24, yeah.
We are including, or creating, 17 new positions. And then, there are going to be about five that will remain as is, and then, three that will have some minor tweaks to them.
Okay, so, what happens to the people in the positions now?
So, there will be the opportunity for all employees within our HR department to apply for these new positions.
So, they have to reapply?
Yes, ma'am.
For these positions?
Yes.
So, they're new positions, are they new titles and some new duties, but essentially the same thing? So, if you have a, I looked at the org charts, the current and the proposed, you have something like a, you had recruiter, you currently have recruiters, and on the new org chart, you have talent.
Talent acquisitions.
People, or whatever. It's same thing.
So, it is different. We are proposing to revamp that entire unit, to become talent acquisition specialists, and of course, adding a supervisor. They will go out and actively recruit. Currently, the staff that does the recruiting for us at this point, really kind of screen applications. They don't actively go out and seek candidates for these positions.
But for both of those, recruitment is the job, it's job one.
That's correct.
It's same thing. So, how many employees will no longer meet the requirements of these positions?
I don't know that at this point. We haven't looked at that.
What assistance will be provided to help these people? Because, I'm, be honest, and I don't think this was your decision, you're just the second in charge. This looks like we're blowing up a department. These people are going to, the director is relatively new, so she's cleaning house. But my concern is why, number one, do all these people have employee file that's, you know, full of poor performance? We can't discuss it here, but it'd be interesting to know why.
So, what I can tell you is that this reorg is to realign things within HR. So, we want to bring stronger leadership structure to the department, so you've seen the organization chart, the proposed, so that's one of the things that we want to strengthen. We want to add the dedicated talent acquisition team, we want to expand the learning and development team, the function, so that we create in-house training, we no longer have to go out to get training, so that's part of the plan. We'd like to enhance our compensation and benefits program, so currently, they're kind of separated, but these are total rewards. I mean, that's truly the area that this falls under for Tarrant County, and so, we want to clean all this up. And we also want to enhance our operational structure. So, we want to have some efficiencies, we're going, we plan to add some efficiencies, so that's part of the reason why this reorg has been planned.
And so, these people, you're pretty clear, aren't capable?
No, I do not know that at this point.
Okay, because, why didn't you pursue reclassification?
That was, that decision was made at an executive level, I was not involved in that, so.
Do you happen to know?
I can speak more generally to the process. So, typically, when any, anybody wants to look at a position, anytime the position reaches a certain threshold, as far as roles and responsibilities changing, typically, it would become a riff and replace versus a reclass. Reclasses are more due to knowledge, experience, skill sets changing of the current general job description versus a complete change. And what I've heard Rochelle say is, they are actually, you know, new job descriptions, different duties, sounds like significantly different duties from what's currently being done.
I just, I find it hard to believe that the people sitting in, in those positions aren't capable of doing this, and just, we can't reclassify, rewrite the job, reclassify. And just, we can't reclassify, rewrite the job, reclassify them. So last, last meeting, a public speaker got up and talked about having out-of-state employees. Is that still going to be the case with this?
I am not certain of that proposal. That is not included in this budget item. So, I am not certain of that.
I think it was clarified last time. The two individuals that were talked about were not Tarrant County employees. They're contractors that work for Tarrant County. So they wouldn't show up on an org chart as employees.
Okay, I'm going to pull up the org chart in just a second. So, will they still be here as contract workers, contract employees?
Again, I'm not certain.
I believe as of right now, that's the plan, is to continue those contract employees until such time that we don't need them anymore because we would be able to fulfill this internally.
Okay, so you don't anticipate those two California, North Carolina, contract workers to be, to end up being employed with this county?
No, ma'am. That is not my understanding at all. They would, if they are to continue working for Tarrant County, it would be as contractors, not as employees of Tarrant County.
Okay, so could they fulfill one of these positions on the org chart as contractors?
That I don't know. I'd have to try to look at the org chart myself really quick on that, if I needed to.
Okay. And we used staffing agency to recruit these people?
That's correct. They are compensated by Tarrant County through a staffing agency. That's correct. A contract that was already in place.
Yes, sir. What do we pay this staffing agency? What's the percentage?
I'd have to get you the, I don't know that number off the top of my head, but I can certainly get it for you.
Okay. And this, this is not being pitched as a cost savings, is it? This HR reorg?
I'll defer to Helen. I believe, I believe it is a cost savings when they, when they proposed what they proposed.
Yeah, it's a $231,000 cost savings.
So, okay, I must have not looked at the right lines. I looked at salaries. That's all. I looked at salaries, and it was a $7,000 cost savings. So decreasing from 30 to 20, whatever, on, in your book?
She's eliminating 22 positions and only adding 17. So just the mere numbers would create a bigger savings than $7,000. And we have it, if you, at the very back of the, I don't know if the totals are on the elimination sheet, but, and I want to speak to reclasses. It's very important that reclass, you just don't reclass a position. It needs to have significant, it needs to be very close to the current job description for it to just be reclassed. It is totally different when a department creates new positions that are doing significantly additional duties. And then I ask, because positions are created in my office, I ask that you don't reclass, I ask that you add positions. So she was going by what I was asking her to do.
Okay, so, hang on, Helen. Does the, okay, or Chandler, whichever one. So, when these folks are out of state being paid, do we pay what type of taxes? We pay that state's employment taxes? How does that work?
That might be audit.
It's going to be paid through the contracting, the contractor's paying that, not Tarrant County.
Okay. And is SAP configured for multi-state payroll processing?
We are not, no, we are not currently configured to do multi-state at this time.
Okay. And do that, do we say last time that they get benefits?
I don't think they do, but.
Yeah, I'm not certain, but I don't believe that they do.
Okay. So on your org chart, I saw an increase from two to four of the MG management level positions. And that's occurring in one of the county's smallest departments. Can somebody speak to that?
Yeah, sure. I mean, it is really to realign the structure, to make sure, I mean, if you looked at the previous structure, there were all kinds of positions that reported up. And so this is to realign everything, to have teams built that properly report into a proper leader for those different sections. So, HR operations to, so this is using HR best practices to just kind of realign everything. HR operations, talent, I'm sorry, total rewards. And then the third section is our learning and development. So, it's just kind of realigning everything, realigning everything to have the proper authority reporting to the director.
Okay, are you guys helping these folks find jobs?
We will, just like we're doing for anyone else that is impacted by a layoff.
And I want to say, I think all of them are being encouraged to apply for the new roles. So it isn't, people are being written off. They are, they are going to be encouraged to apply for the new roles.
We'll see.
Yes, ma'am. Well, again, I think, I think the policy is always to hire the best qualified candidate for whatever the role is. But I think, as, you know, not to repeat Rochelle, but what the director has done has made a proposal in consultation with the Budget Office with regards to how we should go about this. And this is the result that we're presenting to the court for recommendation.
Okay, so, these HR folks, if they don't get their jobs back, they'll be competing for county jobs, internal jobs with the folks y'all laid off from Public Health, Human Services, my office, Miles' office. So, I would like to see how many, maybe next week, how many people from Public Health were placed internally and assisted by Human Resources? And how many people from Human Services have been assisted and placed internally by Human Services? This, this county typically does not do it this way. They don't clean house in a department. So, if, and then if those out-of-state people become permanent employees, are we changing the remote policy for everybody in the county? So, lots of questions. I'll definitely be paying very close attention to this. And I hope we take care of our people like we profess to be family once a month when we're sitting up here doing employee appreciation. So, I don't have any good reports from Human Services that people have been assisted. And so I'm concerned.
Your comments are well taken, ma'am.
Thank you.
If you'd like to.
Good morning, Court. So I just want to advocate at a higher level for the people that have large departments that have to hire and go through these processes. The Sheriff's Office has their own department. I was over there for eight years. In the past, with our HR department, we actually met with the judge once a quarter to relate the challenges we had in HR and how to make that happen, minus the county administrator, just to make sure we were trying to move on the same page. So a lot of changes have been made. So I would just like to ask, with these new positions coming in, at the end of the day, it is, we are the customers. And we have to be able to get applications that are vetted correctly, that make things happen, our onboarding processes. So we are going to give grace to these changes, but I'm going to ask that we reserve the right to come back in and say, this is working and this is not working, because we do a lot of hiring in these big departments. And we just need it to work. Right now, a lot of things have been changed, and we're living through a lot of those changes. And everything is kind of in a gray, mixy, messy area. So I'm looking forward to that. But I do want you to know, I will be asking the court to help us if we find these changes are, again, from the past, holding us up to make sure we are able to hire the most qualified, get them processed, and get them in for our departments. Thank you.
Alright, any other questions from the court members?
You know, on the HR restructuring, you know, I asked Roxy in the departments a lot of questions about this, a lot similar to what you asked, Commissioner Simmons. And, you know, Roxy has vast experience in the HR world in dealing with very, very large organizations. And the articulated reason given to me was that we're bringing HR into the 21st century, trying to find ways to make it more efficient and more effective for our customers. Because like you said, I think the large departments are HR's customers. You know, she's out there fielding these applications, out there recruiting good people to come work for you and for other departments. And so I do think that giving her a bit of grace as she tries to organize and restructure and create a vision for the HR department, I think that that's our responsibility, is to do that. We're not in her shoes every single day, doing her job. And so if she recommends this in the budget as a restructure, and she can, she thinks that, you know, using 90% of the existing people with some additional resources will help, then great. So, I mean, I'm willing to allow her to try this restructure, and I think that I'll be supportive of that. So, just my comments on the HR side.
One last thing, Rochelle or Chandler. Our, our customer base is diverse. We have a very diverse workforce in the county. And so I hope that, that Human Resources, not Services, Human Resources Department will take that into consideration when recruiting and hiring talent.
Okay, any other questions from the court in general?
Yeah. Well, I have a statement. And really, it's for you, Helen, and your team. So this morning, I saw them walking across the street from the admin building, and they were all together, and they looked like they were not going to war, but coming from a war, crossing the street all in a pack, and it was a sight. But I'll say this, you guys have done an incredible job, as you have over the last several years, in dealing with self-imposed constraints. I mean, you know, whenever I talk about our budget, every time, and once we approve the budget, or a budget, you know, we're going to start talking about the next year's budget. And so, you know, I'm very firm on no new revenue being my ceiling. You know, I think that term, you know, it's, it should be very simple to understand, but for a lot of people, it's not. And truly, to me, what it means is that a single taxpayer in their capacity as a property owner doesn't pay an additional dollar more to the county than they did the previous year. That's no new revenue from a taxpayer, in my perspective. You've hit that mark two years in a row. This will be the third in balancing our budget and getting us to a place where we can say that we're operating as efficiently and as responsibly as we can. And a lot of that is due to your work. So I really appreciate what you've done and continue to do. So, thank you.
Thank you.
I'll make a couple of comments. The, you know, you look at the number of departments, and there's a whole lot of them. There's a whole lot of requests. But the fact that everyone works together and is trying to do the right thing by not only the people, but by you guys and all the elected officials, you know, I forget what the number is. I think it's 69 different elected officials. And for everyone to come together like this, and not everybody gets what they want. And, I mean, there's going to be things in the budget that we ultimately pass, whenever that is in a month, that it's not exactly how I would create it. There's always, well, I don't really like that, or I wish that wasn't there, but I think we could do better here. But at the end of the day, this looks to me like a good budget. It looks to me like it's been a lot of hard work and a lot of cooperation amongst a lot of people. And thank you for what you've done. Thank you, thank you. I think y'all have done a fantastic job, and I continue to be impressed by the work you do.
Thank you, sir.
Alright, anybody have anything else?
Yes. So, I am going to ask that an item be removed from this budget. And that is the elimination of, or limiting of Commissioners' staff, Courtmembers' staff to five. And it, it seemed, I'm strongly opposed to this, what seems to be a unilateral decision to limit Courtmembers' administrative staff. I'm not one to mince words, and this whole thing feels like a backroom deal cooked up without all of us at the table. How did we get to the number five? How did we get to the salary cap? And let's, let's not forget the new challenges that we face as a result of redistricting. I've just taken on a whole bunch of new unincorporated constituency, and my office has been swamped with calls from folks who are new to us, need our help, hadn't been getting the attention that they wanted. I'm a different, different type of Commissioner. I put on my boots and jeans. I go to these people's houses. I pet their llamas. I look in their culverts. I see what's happening. And so, after a three-and-a-half-hour meeting with everybody in transportation, I'm taking on a lot of additional unincorporated responsibility in addition to just the everyday responsiveness. So, the added workload makes it critical for me to have the staff that I currently have and could use more, because I'm trying to serve the community. That's, that's, you all know, that's, that's who I am. Not all precincts are created equal. Precinct two constituents, residents rely on county services more than most. And this decision will hit them directly. My people are responsive. We go to homes. We go wherever they ask us to go. And I don't know if, what the purpose is here. I hope we're not marginalizing and discriminating against the very folks that elected us to serve them. And then with regard to my current staff, I haven't been able to take the time to, I think about it in my sleep all the time, but decide who, who leaves. Their livelihoods are being affected by what I hope is not, or what seems to be political. The people who I have to get rid of, they had, they, the ones it will probably be are the ones that were here before I got here. And so they just serve in those roles. To have people that don't even serve in Precinct Two to make this decision for Precinct Two and One without including us, this feels divisive. And I just say shame on you. I ask that this be removed from the budget, not for me, but for my constituents and my staff.
How many additional positions in Road and Bridge have you asked for?
There are 20, but I wouldn't have to ask for any if we would assign, it'd make fiscal sense to ask for any if we would assign the ones from precinct 1 to precinct 2.
And how many positions will be eliminated if this budget passes from your office?
Three or four.
Three or four. So you'll get a net gain of 16 or 17 positions if this is passed and you get an additional 16 or 17 positions. Is that political, too?
Lizbeth can't qualify to be an equipment operator, too. Okay? So my positions are garage positions. I had 21 road miles. I now have 197. So I have got to have more equipment operators, laggards, and a design guy. I mean, I could go down the list. So Noddy, Valerie, Elizabeth, or Lizbeth, Hector, they're not qualified for those jobs, sir.
All right. Do we have any other comments from any of the commissioners?
I'll just say that, you know, I think the primary pickup, and your point's well taken about additional road miles and additional responsibility, but I do think that's reflected in the budget and giving you additional resources. I think that having, you know, I've got 21 different cities inside of my precinct. So I have half of the county's cities inside of precinct 4. And that's a lot of ILAs, because a lot of these cities are small, and they can't manage road operations on their own. And so we do work with them every single day, and the same number of road miles. And I think that having maintenance separated from general makes a whole heck of a lot of sense, because the primary duty of an ex officio, or the only duty of an ex officio road commissioner, is roads and bridges within the precinct. Now, as far as the general office goes, I don't see it as being political in any form or fashion to ask every commissioner to operate with the same exact number and budget. I think that is being ultimately equal for everybody. We all represent roughly the same exact amount of citizens. And so having the identical staff, I mean, we're not asking anything from any additional commissioner to do that we're not doing already. And so as far as the comment about it being hatched and schemed, we've talked about this for a year, about level-setting and making sure that we all have consistency amongst how the commissioners' general offices are operating. Obviously, the maintenance shops are going to be different, because everybody has a different number of cities that they have ILAs with. Everybody has a different number of road miles that they have to maintain. But the general office, the core functions of county government are pretty simple. And so hitting that mark with the same number as any other commissioner, in my opinion, isn't only fair. I mean, that's the way to make it equal. So I don't understand the surprise here that you've expressed, because we've discussed this. And the recommendation came from asking Helen, "How can you make it equal?" And that's it.
So we haven't discussed it for a year. For example, Roxy was, actually, it's been since April, actually, is when I first heard it. Now, if y'all have discussed it for a year, it's a different thing. So was broached in a meeting, enclosed. You actually talked about, you brought it up. Perhaps we should do what the Texas Legislature does. Okay? You brought that up. It didn't go that far in that meeting. And it came back one other time, where we, who came up with five? Who came up with the cap amount, dollar amount? I would, so we hadn't been talking about it for a year. It's just been since April. I would beg to differ with you on the fact that what each commissioner's office does is simple, and it's the same. I don't think anybody does the same amount of community outreach events that I do, perhaps precinct 1 commissioner. Nobody does the town halls that I do. Nobody is as responsive to these constituents as I am.
I beg to differ on that. We respond to every single one that reaches out to our office immediately. We see them. We call them. We email them, every single person. And the rule for my office is no one goes 24 hours without being responded to that reaches out to us.
And we meet with them. We don't blow them off. We listen to what their concerns are. So we work in precinct 2. And this really is going to affect, it's not going to affect those at the higher level. It's going to affect those administrative people, two of them that have been here for 12 years, 10 years, that type of thing. So if that's in your heart to do that, that you have to live with that. But these folks hadn't done anything to you. They've served this county well. They answer these phones. They enter things into our constituent service system. And they make sure everybody is touched and responded to immediately. You're affecting those people, not me.
Commissioner Kraus?
Yeah, I think Commissioner Kraus has something.
Yeah. I just wanted to add some general comments, as some of the other members have done, and just tell Chandler and Helen and the team, thank you for the incredible work that y'all have put in. It's my first budget cycle, obviously, at the county, but I've been through five others at the state. And sometimes I think when the numbers are smaller, it's actually harder to do. And so I think y'all have done a yeoman's effort to take care of the county's needs, the county, being a fast-growing county, making sure everything continues to stay on track while still bringing us under the no new revenue rate. And I think that is a testament to y'all, and it is a testament to the court members that were there before I was, that y'all put us on a good path and a trajectory in fiscal stewardship. So I think the three of y'all who preceded me are to be thanked as well. But I just think that for the citizens of Tarrant County, it's good to know how purposeful and intentional the county administration staff and the commissioners' court is to be good, efficient tax stewards of the taxpayer dollar. And I think this budget does that. So I appreciate y'all and look forward to voting for this budget today.
All right.
That's something. Finally, I do appreciate the auditor's office, the budget office, the, all of you guys over there that aren't sitting out here, but thank you for, to your staffs for what they do and what they have done. One big problem is that this process must be more transparent for the public. They did not have access to the budget, the draft budget, talks, consideration, until the agenda was published. This is their money. And I know I've told some of them to deal directly with you, Helen, and you have. But that's a few people. This process needs to be very transparent to those who we serve. And I understand we have to wait for the certified tax roll. But you cannot tell me, can't make me believe, that you don't start drafting a budget, and a draft budget, on the day that you receive that certified tax roll. And so getting these documents and this data so late for a commissioner, and even, I mean, for a commissioner and the public, is, we've got to do better. But I appreciate the work that your staffs do to put all this together. So thank you all. And the department heads, because you guys, and the elected officials. You guys have to take hits and cuts and be told no. And not sure how you deal with it, but you've dealt with it. So thank you all.
All right. We have four speakers. Does anyone want to make a motion before we bring the speakers up?
So you have a list in front of you that is all the departments that are satisfied with one department, precinct 2, Lisa Simmons not satisfied. I would ask that you consider making a motion for all of the departments that are satisfied with their budget.
Well, I'll make a motion that we approve the budget as presented. Second, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion before we go to the speakers? Okay. First speaker up is Dr. Harriet Harrell. Following Dr. Harrell is Miranda Mayo.
Last year, I was stunned to see that the public hearing on the budget held the very same day that commissioners voted, just 15 minutes later. That sent an unmistakable message that the public input was irrelevant. It's cynical to pretend that this was anything close to a real public hearing. And here we are, a year later, same process, same disregard. A budget is more than numbers. It's a statement of priorities and a measure of whether the county honors its mission, goals, and citizens' needs. We've had only three days to review nearly 300 pages. And there are a number of red flags we'd like to review. Human resources is one, with how are we really treating our employees? Zeroing out all the nonprofits and public assistance is a red flag. And reducing by 100,000 the amount that's moved from there into community outreach is another red flag. And if there were time to get into more of it, I'd have more, probably. What it looks like is that Tarrant County doesn't care about its people, employees, and citizens. Today's workshop wasn't publicized to encourage citizen participation. And on Tuesday, there'll be another public hearing minutes before the vote, again, leaving no time to consider what citizens say. Other Texas counties do better. Bear County holds weekly budget town halls in August. Harris County offers online tools and multiple forums for residents. Dallas County opens departmental budget hearings to the public. Why are Tarrant County residents denied similar respect? We demand a change for next year. First, give us the tools. Provide online ways for residents to suggest real budget adjustments, like Harris County does. Second, open the doors. Advertise workshops and hearings so citizens know when and where they can be heard. And you be there to hear them. Third, be serious about it. Give time between public hearings and final action so that commissioners and budget office can incorporate citizen suggestions. Transparency, engagement, and respect are not incidental. They are the foundation of trust, and Tarrant County deserves no less.
Thank you.
All right. Is Ms. Mayo present? How do I pronounce it?
Mayu.
Mayu. Okay. Following Ms. Mayu, we have Joe Palmer.
Good morning, everyone. I'm here to speak today on our previous decisions to minimize the workforce with the Health and Human Services Department. And reviewing that decision, I know that we have a lot of difficult budget decisions today. This court has the responsibility of making those difficult budget decisions. However, what I am asking for is for a reversal on that decision and a reconsideration and revisal of the proposed timeline. I believe it's January 2026, where we're looking at the final reduction in workforce from the Health and Human Services Department. My suggestions are that we expand that timeline from, I think from now till then, it's like six months, and expanding that timeline to about a year. Another consideration is, can all of you hear me okay?
Yeah.
Another consideration or a suggestion that I have is, right now, down in the state legislature, we do still have a special session going on. Those surplus funds from the previous legislation haven't been released yet. They're being considered for the new budget. I do understand that. And our special session, while Health and Human Services funding isn't considered as part of one of those 18 points that the governor's outlined in the special session, I do believe that we have other elected officials who can make requests of indirect appeals to the governor on considering releasing some of those special funds, some of those surplus fundings, to mitigate the immediate costs, that 1.7 million cost from the administrative, excuse me, to mitigate those immediate costs of that department. And moving forward, we can still follow that proposed timeline and the continuing reducing of that workforce and delegating responsibilities to local nonprofits. One second. I think that we can make this direct appeal to the governor. We have several commissioners who are aligned on party lines with the governor, and to release those funds help mitigate some of the costs that we're considering for the budget for the coming fiscal year. And that's all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Commissioner Kraus, are you motioning over here?
No.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Palmer. Following Mr. Palmer, we have Geraldine Jackie Cox.
Thank you. These questions to staff relating to motive for increases is good, but it needs much more attention in these meetings. You need to be meeting more often, definitely more than once a month prior to a rate and budget vote. I would encourage commissioners to consider with much value whether the reasoning presented in support of claims by department heads is substantial enough to grant the increases. 4.9 billion in new construction. The tax revenue collected from these properties is exempt from the no new revenue rate calculation. For this reason, you need to adopt a tax rate below the no new revenue rate in order to honestly claim that you are not increasing taxes on the community. In my opinion, department budgets should have been posted earlier and more prominently on the website. We need more detail offered to the public. There are not enough line items, not enough specificity, not a good look to compare to other counties presumably to lower expectations on ourselves. I do not support going up on constable fees. Quote, "We are not able to determine the last time these were increased." By all means, go find that and get back to us. Reserves, 16%, hoping to achieve with reserve, 60 days operating. Keep it at 55 days operating, unless a reason can be articulated beyond merely stating that debt rating authorities recommend this. Asking for a voluntary, I am asking for a voluntary pay and benefit cut for commissioners and county judge. No answer given to Commissioner Simmons' question regarding how many people will be affected or let go by the 16 new positions. Actually, let's delete that. No clear answer given as to who made the decision not to reclassify existing employees in the new positions. The statement was made that you don't reclassify when the new position is doing something completely new or different. Why is the county embarking on tasks that are new and different? This economy is terrible right now. People can't afford to eat. People don't have money. Prices are going up. Stores are stocking less. Healthcare is going up. Is this really the time for local taxing entities to be getting creative with tax money? Total of 58 new positions, I don't see how this is needed by the county, considering the habit of entering into inter-local agreements that ship tasks to those other entities. This is an urban county. But where you do need new people is in the tax offices. The lines are longer than before, and there are typically few people at the windows to help people. There was one office that had two people working at windows when I went, with all waiting seats filled, and about two dozen people in the hallway, handicapped people, elderly people. I want these following things provided to me before the hearing, please. Last year's property tax levy, the projected levy associated with the proposed rate and budget, the projected The projected rate needed to bring in the same amount of tax revenues last year. Again, factoring in the new growth. Again, I'm asking for the adoption of a rate that brings the same amount of tax revenues last year, adjusted for inflation. Would also like a line item for projected legal fees relating to in custody deaths.
Thank you, Ms. Cox.
Can you hear me? I haven't heard some of the people very well.
We can hear you fine.
All right. All right. The perspective I bring to this as a taxpayer and as a citizen who tries to keep up with county government is that, you know, the ordinary person. And so, I was hoping last Friday to have a copy of this budget draft so that I'd have the weekend to look through it. And I would work with other people and we'd talk about it. But last Friday, you posted notice that we would get the hearing, or it's not a hearing, it's a workshop, today, but not a copy of what was to be discussed. I kept looking. It wasn't there on Saturday, it wasn't there on Sunday, it wasn't there when I first looked on Monday morning. I finally found it mid-afternoon on Monday, and I don't know what time you posted it, but I know that it should have been posted 72 hours in advance of this meeting so that we would have had some time to look at it, and it was not. Then, after I got it, oh, what an unpleasant surprise. 200, almost 200, well, almost 300 pages. Not indexed, not topical discussion, no information except columns and numbers. And it did not appear to me that I was even seeing programs that had to do with either state or federal revenue. So, I went looking over to the Local Government Code to see what was supposed to be there. And I found three parts of the Local Government Code to deal with what must go in the budget. And they're kind of identical. I mean, there's Section 11, 1004, for counties of less than 265,000. There's section, a different one for larger counties, and a third one for anybody who wants to take whatever pick they want. And so, you really have three options. And it appears to me that you picked the option controlled by the county judge, but whatever. Whomever prepares the budget in any of these three options shall itemize the budget to as well a clear comparison between expenditures included in the proposed budget and actual expenditures for the same or similar purposes that were made in the preceding fiscal year. Congratulations, you've had impenetrable budgets two years in a row. I never got narratives last year. I miss Judge Woodley. But it does say that you must show as definitely as possible each of the projects for which an appropriation is established in the budget.
Thank you, Ms. Cox. Thank you. Okay, those are all the folks we have signed up to speak. A reminder that this
You're not in compliance with the law.
A reminder that this budget, this motion, and this budget is to move forward. There will be a final vote on the budget a month from now. There will also be, actually a little less than a month, I guess it is, what does it say? The 14th? No, it'll be about a month. And then, there will be a vote on tax ceiling rate, the first meeting of September. So, we have a motion and a second to move forward with this budget as presented. Any further discussion from the court members? All right, seeing none, all in favor, please raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Aye. You have an aye there, Mr. Kraus? Verbal? I'm just following lawyer's orders. Did he say aye?
Yes.
Okay, there we go. All opposed, please raise your hand and say no.
No.
All right, so, the motion moves, or the budget moves forward by a three to one vote. Those are all the items we have on this workshop, so we are now adjourned. What, what did I? Okay, and your opinion, legal opinions, we can do this very thing right now as we speak.
You can discuss it and give direction to the budget officer as to what you would like to see in the budget for final adoption at the future meeting. So, yes is the short answer to your question.
Okay, okay. All right, so what do we have?
Consideration of equipment, assignment of maintenance center located at 800 East Rinden Crowley Road, Burleson, Texas, 76028, for the exclusive use of Precinct Two's road and bridge crew.
Can you repeat that again?
Consideration of assignment of maintenance center located at 800 East Rinden Crowley Road, Burleson, Texas, 76028, Precinct One. From Precinct One to Precinct Two for the exclusive use of Precinct Two's road and bridge crew.
Okay, is there, and the reason we're voting or talking about this is because it's on this piece of paper right here?
All of the redistricting was requested to go through the budget process. That was the direction of the court.
Okay, do we have a discussion or motion, or what are we doing on this?
I'll make, I'll discuss it. So, because of redistricting, the maintenance center located at that address, 800 East Rinden Crowley Road, Burleson, Texas, 76028, that maintenance center is in Precinct Two. And I thought that it's redistricting, put it in Precinct Two, it's in Precinct Two. Legal tells me that it has to be assigned by the court to Precinct Two. I said, so, are all facilities assigned by the court to that precinct? If it's built there, isn't it, isn't it in that precinct for that precinct's use? So, they said that it has to be assigned by the court for precinct Two's use, even though you guys put it in Precinct Two, it still has to be assigned. Or you can say it better, Mr. Cradaville.
I don't disagree with anything that you're saying, Commissioner. The court has the ability to assign office space and facilities to elected officials to carry out their duties. With few exceptions, those can be located anywhere in the county. And so, if the court wanted to assign a particular building or office to an elected official to carry out their duties, it has the power to do so, regardless of where it is.
How many maintenance centers do we have total?
So, there are four, and one in each precinct.
So, each
There's one assigned to each precinct.
Each commissioner has a precinct?
Each commissioner has
I'm sorry, each commissioner has a maintenance center?
Yes, yes. Each commissioner has a
What are you trying to do, switch your maintenance centers?
I'm trying to use the precinct, the old, the maintenance center located in the old Precinct One. It's now Precinct Two.
Instead of the one you currently use?
No, I need both. I stretch from here to Johnson and Parker County now, if you look at the map.
So, would this leave Precinct One without a maintenance shed?
Yes, but Precinct One has four miles. I went from 20 to 197.
Okay, so now what are we doing?
Do we know if Commissioner Miles has weighed in on this?
Yes, he and I have had conversations about it. But he's not here, so.
Gerald, are you from his op, do you want to speak to his opinion?
Good evening, good afternoon. Absolutely, Commissioner Miles, I've met with Commissioner Simmons. He feels that he has every right to keep his facility in Precinct One that has been assigned to him by the court. We have met and had conversations about this with Commissioner Simmons and her team. So, it's of opinion. He wants to keep the facility, his equipment, all in Precinct One.
Well, you guys are still going to maintain a workforce and equipment, correct? So, you need somewhere.
Absolutely, absolutely. And we'll continue to maintain the ILAs that are assigned and that are currently assigned. But it's Commissioner Miles' opinion that currently, based on redistricting, that he's still currently under the representation that he's, you know, the lines that he was currently represented under. So, he still feels like, hey, I still have my maintenance facility as assigned by the court where it's at right now.
And some of that equipment, so, first of all, Cradaville, one question for you. There's nothing that says that your facility has to be inside of the precinct boundaries, correct? The court can decide what gets assigned to whom?
Correct.
Equipment and facilities?
Correct.
Got it. So, one thing, I don't like the term exclusive in this request. I mean, because I would say Commissioner Miles needs a base of operation for his maintenance folks because he's still going to have ILAs, and they're still going to help their member cities on road projects, and they're still going to have employees and equipment. But I do agree that it makes sense proximity-wise to house equipment that'll be utilized to manage and maintain unincorporated roads that are surrounding that area. I think it was placed there strategically for those roads. And so, I don't see there being a conflict if you and Commissioner Miles worked together on housing equipment that essentially could be shared for whatever use, any other case. I mean, if we had a shop way up northeast, I know Commissioner Kraus and I have discussed that about collaborating pretty closely to make sure that we share resources if we need them. And we've done it in the past, you know, if his office needed a couple trucks for a specific job, you know, we always collaborated that way. I don't know if that was y'all's intention here, but the word exclusive makes it seem like it's not.
So, there is responsibility assigned to these facilities. I think you agree with that. If something's happening at your sub courthouse, like it's my sub courthouse currently, the Chiller is out in Mansfield. That's my responsibility to work with facilities, to make sure, you know, everything is getting, taken care of. Walk through the tax office, sit in there, and feel the 80 degrees. So, the responsibility, I think, has to be assigned to some one of us. Absolutely, our maintenance directors, mine, his, yours, Commissioner Kraus', they all work together. They, we borrow equipment from three, four, that already exists. But of the two commissioners, and one and two, who's, who has the responsibility of that facility? You can keep all the equipment and have four road miles and one ILA. One is what they have now. And put Precinct Two in a bind. So, if we assign the facility to where y'all put it, y'all put it in two. Assign the employees, then I won't have to put in a request for additional staff. They exist. It's the fiscally responsible thing to do.
Okay, I don't, I'm sorry, I thought you were done.
And the same with the equipment. There's no need to purchase any additional, it's sitting there. So, if you have four road miles, one ILA versus, we have countless ILAs and 197 miles, and we're spread this wide. It makes sense to assign that facility to the commissioner that will utilize it the most. Commissioner Miles and I can do, make agreements, sign agreements, and that crew, his crew, my crew, whichever, however it's divvied up by the director, can go out and do their ILAs. So, it's an assignment, I'm told, that needs to happen. Just because redistricting put it in two, that's not good enough? It needs to be assigned to two.
Who told you that?
The DA.
The DA, you've told her it needs to be assigned to two?
No, if I, if it can't, redistricting doesn't automatically put it in two.
If it's going to be reassigned, he told you the court has to reassign?
Yes, there you go.
So, I want to go back to something you said, if I understood it correctly. The reason you need additional people, the reason you need additional staff is because you don't control that maintenance center. Did I understand that correctly?
No, 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 no.
If you get the maintenance, because if the maintenance center is assigned to you, now you don't need to request additional staff?
The maintenance center is one thing. Staff is another thing.
Okay, so you did not just say the reason you're having to request additional staff is because the maintenance center is not assigned to you? You didn't say that?
The reason I'm having to request additional staff is because the staff has not moved over. It hasn't been assigned to two. The building hasn't been assigned to two. The equipment hasn't been assigned to Precinct Two. So, those are three.
Okay, it may sound like I'm trying to trick you, I'm not. I'm just trying to understand it. So, if it's, so I think what I asked, and you said no, that's not what I said, but then I think you turned around and said the exact same thing I asked. So, I may not be asking it the right way. If you were assigned that maintenance center and that staff, are you telling me now you would not request additional positions?
Correct, 100%.
Okay, and call me uninformed, but we can't get the commissioners to work together to do this where they share staff, borrow staff, and we have to have 19 new positions because these positions are over here and he won't let her have them? Well, I don't understand this.
Commissioner Miles transferred 16 positions over into Precinct Two. Commissioner Simmons is, in this budget, you'll see 16 positions transferred.
Okay. I'm just, if anybody here can help me understand this, we have the people.
Yes.
They don't have enough to do, is what, it seems like it's being described on one side. I don't know if the other side agrees with that. And then, but because we're not going to share them and work together on the roads, one thing we do know, roads are not partisan. So, I don't, what am I missing? What am I not being able to understand because I don't understand it? What am I missing?
You're saying thing I'm missing?
Well, let's say you're not assigned it, and he controls the garage, and he has a bunch of people that don't have enough to do. I mean, if he's already giving you 16 positions, but if he has a bunch of people that don't have something to do, are we concerned that those folks over there are just going to sit around the shop and do nothing while we create 19 new positions? Is that what you're talking about?
Jamal, am I correct?
I would say that at this point, anyone, just explain it to me.
Jamal, am I correct? And y'all are seeking new ILAs. You had, they had many miles. They have now a smaller precinct. And the last that we talked, there was an anticipation that Commissioner Miles would be continuing to do ILAs. be continuing to do ILAs.
Judge, actually I have a list of, currently what our work team will not just be sitting around, I have a list of probably about 15 ILAs that our team has already put together that will continue to work on with our team. So our director, Joe and Rick, has already put together a workload for our team to work with our maintenance team. So we're ready to go to work, so we just really want to come to an agreement to try to figure out what's next.
So, so she's asked for this to be assigned to her, leaving Precinct 1 commissioner with no maintenance centers?
Yes, sir.
Y'all say, nah, I don't really want to give the whole thing up. So other than the 16 positions, are you not willing to share employees to fulfill this need of, what I think it was 20 people, I think we just were told?
Absolutely, I think Commissioner Miles was willing to work with Commissioner Simmons any way possible in working with the roads. I think the agreement, I think for us, and if Commissioner Miles was here, I think he would say that, you know, our, our director, Joe, knows the roads, he would work with their director, Jason, to help them get acclimated to the new roads they've adopted. It's just in Commissioner Miles' opinion that the facility needs to stay in, assigned to him, and that's just his stance on this. But he's willing to work with Commissioner Simmons.
So I'll opine a bit. Please. Commissioner Kraus and I are dealing with something similar. Statutorily, it's complicated, and you can imagine with 254 counties, four commissioners in every one of them, and the bulk of them are rural, and so they, all they do is road and bridge maintenance. The Attorney General's opined time and time again that one, an employee who is assigned to a commissioner cannot report to an additional commissioner. And so that, that complicates it a bit. However, there's nothing that says that commissioners can't work together and essentially forge ILAs between their own precincts.
Right.
And determine who does what. I mean, that's the anticipation with myself and Commissioner Kraus. Go back to the ILA between precincts, like literally, we would vote to say there's an ILA. No, they would come to an agreement. Because, I mean, you know, the ex-official road commissioner system quite literally means they're in care, custody, and control and charge, we're, of every single road mile in our precinct, without exception. I mean, it's, the law's pretty clear there. So what is anticipated with myself and Commissioner Kraus is that we will work together every time there's an issue that comes up, where either there's an ILA that's on the border, there's some road miles that are on the border, or his staff was previously very familiar with an area and they've been working on these roads and maintaining them for decades, the folks that are doing the job, that will work very closely together. So my anticipation for this process was the exact same as I think Commissioner Simmons, when we said there should be no additional need for adding employees.
Right.
Because they already exist. The workload now, I mean, all precincts have different workloads. I mean, you can look at our, our guys' worksheets, starting at 05:00 in the morning, they're on seven different jobs every single day, large jobs. But that comes with having 21 cities and all these road miles. But, but at the end of the day, I think a solution to this might be as simple as you and Commissioner Miles sitting down and discussing going forward on personnel utilization and equipment, certainly, I think, is one that proximity matters because fuel costs are high. And so having equipment where the bulk of the work is going to be done is important. Now, I don't know if you object to this, but I certainly don't. I mean, I think that Commissioner Miles has been in custody and control of that facility for a long time, and so having him remain there, because that'd be the only place that his staff could be, there's not another one for him right now, having that continue to be assigned to him with the agreement that equipment and personnel that may be assigned to you can also be housed there, I think that's probably the logical way to go. And then between now and September 16th, everybody works together to figure out exactly how that gets parsed out, so that there is minimal cost and minimal additional folks.
No, I don't feel comfortable taking a maintenance shed out of a precinct, no matter whose it is, one, two, three, or four, I think each precinct ought to have a maintenance shed, unless we go to just a Uniform 1 at some point where everybody's together, I know that's been thrown about at some point, but I think each precinct ought to have a maintenance shed that they can have their operations out of. And I'd be uncomfortable voting to give exclusive access from one precinct to another, assigning that exclusively, and especially without that commissioner present. So I don't know if I can support it as written or as, as offered, especially as Commissioner Ramirez said with that exclusivity nomenclature in there.
Okay, let me ask a question, Commissioner Ramirez. You said the Attorney General has regularly opined that a, tell me what you said about an employee of Precinct 1 can't go report to Precinct 2.
Yeah, it's about reporting and managerial direction, it's not necessarily about working in geography. So basically, if Commissioner Simmons, if I say Commissioner Simmons, we need some help on this very large project, can you send a crew up here to do this? She can direct that crew what to do in my precinct? Technically, I, as the commissioner there, cannot direct her crew what to do in my precinct. You can't go in there and say, you're fired, you have to take the rest of the day off, you're demoted, whatever it may be. Exactly. But is there, is there inner cooperation now, as we speak between commissioners? So this, the one thing I want to say is, everything, I'm trying to take this all in and understand that I'm not a road and bridge commissioner, so they kind of do their own stuff. Regardless of what the boundaries are of a precinct, if, if, if there is more equipment needed for the county, okay, if there's more people needed for the county, because we, but I don't think any of the road miles have changed. I don't think we have any additional lanes, miles, it's the stuff. So I haven't heard anyone say, in fact, I've heard the opposite, I haven't heard anyone say, we don't have enough crews to do the work that needs to be done. I have heard, we need more people because I don't get to control his people. But his people, if y'all are saying, we've got too much work to do, we're not going to be able to loan it out, that's one thing that would justify additional positions. It doesn't sound like that's what you're saying.
So, okay. So this is an unintended consequence of redistricting. The facility was put into Precinct 2. Commissioner Kraus still has a facility in Precinct 3, so first of all. Until maybe a week and a half ago, or two weeks ago, my road crews, that we're staffed to take care of 20 road miles and the ILAs that we have, have been working the roads in Precinct 1, not with the Precinct 1 road crews. It was just about a week and a half ago that my assistant director says, I finally told the Precinct 1 guys, they gotta, they gotta help. And so since June 4th, is when I sent my crews out, we approved redistricting, June 4th, I told my guy, get out there, go assess those Precinct 1 roads. We, they need work. And so we immediately started on those roads and our own with the 35 that I had. So that's, that's an increased workload, and the Precinct 1 maintenance center receptionist, or whoever answers the phone, directed all calls to the Precinct 2 maintenance center. So we're inundated, that's more workload. And so Commissioner Miles has decided 16 positions is what he's going to transfer over of his 65 or 67. That's why the request in the budget for more positions, and it's not what I need, it's just what will, what will help.
So I'm seeing multiple heads shake over that.
Well, he doesn't have 65 positions, he has 59.
He has 59?
Correct, that's what he originally had, he transferred 16 over.
He would be going down under this scenario to 43?
Correct.
Okay.
I just counted, when I counted on his org chart, that's how I got to the 60.
You know, I think this responsibility in the commissioners' court for individual commissioners, I mean, this is probably one of the most important things that we do.
It is.
Especially if you have a vast area of unincorporated that you maintain, I mean, it is nonstop. And like I mentioned, 21 ILAs, half of the county, that's quite literally small cities that do not have the capability to fix and maintain their own roads. And so our folks are out there every single day doing that. What I will say is, I don't think that if there is a conflict, if that's how we characterize this, I don't think that gets solved today. What I say is, we make a decision on the maintenance facility, if that's what you're asking us to do, on who it's assigned to, but then in the next month, before the 16th, talking about who's assigned equipment, where personnel goes, then I think we have the ability to parse all that out, and hopefully all come together and work together on that. But I am of the opinion that, you know, the citizens deserve that service regardless of what precinct they live in, it doesn't matter what city they live in. I mean, every single city pays the same exact tax rate as an unincorporated citizen, to Tarrant County. And so ultimately, I think that it should get hammered out, but, but it's going to take collaboration and work to figure it out between commissioners.
Yes, we continue, we continue to talk. So I agree with Commissioner Kraus, since he's, Commissioner Miles is not here today, just, all of it, just wait.
Is that one and two, or is two the same thing?
One and two.
Okay. Okay, well, I guess the, what I would like to say to finish this one for my piece is, if there is, if roads are not taken care of, if we need more people to take care of roads, I am for it. If we have the people, I am absolutely not for duplicating positions that are unneeded and a complete total waste of taxpayer dollars. So if that is the case, I would encourage all commissioners, budget, administration, staffs of commissioners, let's go figure out how to do this where we're not adding positions that we don't actually need over some what might be a territorial dispute. Okay. All right, I think, or is that it now?
That's it.
Okay. If I hit, we're adjourned, am I official? Okay. Anything else, anyone? Okay, we are officially adjourned.